Glad you all are here and welcome all of my fellow school board members and call this March 27, 2018, school board meeting to order. On behalf of my colleagues and the entire Brevard Public Schools system staff, I would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location. We do appreciate you investing your time and energy to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. And while the board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our very best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thanks to each of you for being active participants in this process. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
This evening, please join me in a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of a member of our Brevard Public School family, John Bowling, a South Area bus driver. Thank you. This evening, Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. I think we started down there. We'll start with Mr. Ziegler tonight.
I'll pass.
Ms. Belford?
I do have just a few shout-outs first before we get too far into it. Would like to wish both Mr. Susan and Mr. Ziegler a belated birthday. They have had birthdays since our last board meeting, so happy birthday to you both. Also, wanted to say thank you to Florida City Gas and Brevard Zoo, who were kind enough to host us for retreats. And those are always so incredibly productive for us to just talk through various elements and grow as a team and challenge ourselves to get better. So, thanks, many thanks to them for hosting us and making that possible. While we were at the zoo, we had a wonderful opportunity to hear about some of the programs that they're doing with our students, our zoo school. We got to tour their classrooms, and they really are such an amazing partner for us here in Brevard County, and we are incredibly thankful to them. Also, you all have heard me for a couple of meetings talking about the community carnival and Out of the Darkness Walk that took place on the 17th. And we had a great turnout. A lot of our North Area schools were represented at the carnival, as well as Brevard Public Schools. Janine Knight from Dr. Theddy's team was there and a couple of her other colleagues from Student Services. And Janine was in a blow-up duck costume, looking absolutely adorable, bouncing around the carnival. But it was a great opportunity for us to have the conversation about suicide awareness and really breaking down some barriers. And it was neat because each of the tents that was there did an activity centered around one of our sources of strength, which is the program that is in five of the North Area schools for suicide prevention. And everybody kind of focused on one of those strengths and did an activity with the folks that were in attendance. So, it was a great opportunity to talk about how we, as a community, can be stronger and to focus on those sources of strength when we're facing some challenges. And I believe that is all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Ms. Deskovic?
Brief, just a shout-out. Mr. Ziegler and I attended the South Area Elementary Science and Art Fair. And as always, blown away by the projects, both the art and the science projects. And a shout-out to Mr. Pitcher, who, I always give him the kudos for putting these things together. It's a pretty big deal, and then he gives his team the credit. So, to him and his team and all those that worked to put that together in our community. I know that Community Credit Union is a big sponsor of that, and so we're grateful for their contribution, as always, to our school district and our many different programs. And I'll leave the big innovation day for Mr. Susan.
Oh, thanks.
Ms.?
So, before I get started on the Innovation Games, which we've been waiting for forever and that you guys are anticipating, I did want to say that, I wanted to say a shout-out to Ms. Majescovic, who's in the back, who was a former assistant principal of mine in the past and allowed me to build an 80-foot coliseum in the middle of Vieira High School and have chariots going around reenacting the battles and allowed me to grow as a teacher. And I just wanted to say thank you for that opportunity. I also see Mr. Kaminski, who was one of my former assistant principals, too, who's now a principal. And I was floored by the fact that he has an athletic training program down there in Palm Bay that actually hosted an Athletic Training Olympics, where the girls were timed on how fast they could tape elbows and do all this other stuff. And it was really fun because I got to be a participant in it. And I didn't run as fast as the other kids from point A to point B, so I was a target. But I just wanted to say thank you, Judd, for making those opportunities for those kids, man. It's really cool to see those kids working at that. And then, yes, I wanted to say something else. Vieira High School had the first of the internship signing updates. Now, if you guys are familiar with this, this is a STAR program that we have through our district, where students with 504s and IEPs have been identified for full employment, if they choose, over the summer or going up until they're 22-years-old throughout the school year. This is lined up with multiple agencies like the zoo and other places. And we went to Vieira High School, and over 150 kids signed up to get full employment over the week, over the summer. That includes USSA and everywhere else. And we're going to Palm Bay, Rockledge, and O'Gally next week. So, it's a very exciting time for internships and getting those kids those soft skills and opportunities that they need inside of our future employment and employers around the county. I did want to talk, finally, about Innovation Games. Man, was that the most amazing thing that I've ever seen in my entire life. We had drone racing, underwater sea perch programs by Northrop Grumman and the Navy. We had a big jet car dragster with a female race car driver there. We had all the different stations set up with Northrop Grumman. We had amazing dignitaries that showed up and showed their support, along with just Boeing, Grumman, and other organizations there for what came to be arguably one of the best STEM events that we've been able to pull on. I will tell you that it never would have happened had it not been for the hard work of Archer's team, Ms. Shirlene, or Shireen, sorry, I do it wrong every time, and Mrs. Heidi Tarji, who put together over 100-hours worth of work to put that together. It was a huge strain on their department to pull that off, to bring 200 kids from over 30 schools together at the Melbourne Airport inside an 85,000-square-foot facility to have the STEM games, along with the Thunderbirds racing and everything else. It was really neat. I also wanted to say thanks to Cheatham, Russell Cheatham, from our IT department, who put together all the infrastructure so that they could have the coding, and Arby, who brought all the buses, and all the students and teachers and everybody else that were a part of it. It was something that I think we've needed for a long time to start driving us towards number-one STEM in the state of Florida, and if not the nation eventually. So, thank you very much for everybody that was involved and making it happen. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, and thank you for all the names. That's outstanding. Dr. Blackburn?
I represent.
Well, I know Mr. Susan really didn't demonstrate that much excitement regarding Innovation Games, but I just want to echo everything that he just said. That was phenomenal, and thank you to all the staff and partners that worked so hard on that. I'm actually going to talk about two of our schools in the audience tonight. Four teams from Palm Bay Magnet High School and one team from Space Coast Junior/Senior High School had their HUNCH designs, HUNCH is an acronym, had their HUNCH designs selected for a formal final design review at Johnson Space Center in Houston, Texas between April 24th and April 27th. I know you're all thinking, just like I was the first time I saw the acronym. So, HUNCH stands for High School Students United with NASA to Create Hardware. This partnership between NASA and Brevard Public Schools provides our career and technical education students the opportunity to study realistic problems related to NASA's spaceflight program and to create hardware or other solutions for NASA's review and use such as simulated space hardware, flight hardware, videos, webpages, and an assortment of other projects determined by NASA. The students from those two schools are here with their teachers and their principals, Rebecca Allen, Kelly Baker from Palm Bay, along with Mr. Kaminski, and Louis Reyes and Carolyn Gannon from Space Coast, here with Principal Majescovic. And we also have our NASA engineer, Lisa Passarelli, who is here as well. A special thank you goes out to her for working with and supporting all of our students. Will those two schools and the teams and teachers please stand and allow us to recognize you? I believe board member, their field trip packets came in late because we just found out that they were awarded this opportunity. So, it's on our agenda to vote on later on in the meeting. But a couple of students, and I believe Ms. Passarelli, would like to come up to the microphone and tell you a little bit about the program, I think, but no one's walking this way, so I may... Okay, they're there, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Alexis Berman. I'm from Palm Bay Magnet High School, and this is Kevin Tenzar and Jacob Darling. We had to basically present a design to our... I have to think. We had to, we got a...
Just to summarize, we're all in different classes, so I represent a class that's majority of seniors. So, all of my classmates are actually on one team. And to represent them, we actually did a preliminary design review. We call it a PDR, with Ms. Lisa here and with another engineer that came from Johnson Space Center. And we had to present our project. My project in particular was actually a can crusher. So, you think, like, there's so much waste onboard the International Space Station. So, our job was to reduce the waste by creating a different can crusher that's a lot less complicated than the one that they use onboard at the moment. So, the first thing we had to do at my team, we actually crushed a can to realize that the rigidity of the can is way too strong for anyone to, it would automatically eliminate a corkscrew design. I don't know if you've ever put anything inside of a vice, automatically eliminated it. So, we went back to reverse engineer an actual can opener, and we realized some of the techniques from the can opener could be used to cut the bottom out. So, once we got the bottom of the can open and the top of the can open, we were able to squish it in half, and it reduced the amount of sharp edges and other criteria and constraints that we had to work with, so to reduce the most space. That was my project. I'll pass it on to my other colleagues to talk about their projects.
So, my project was actually, to me and my group, we designed a trash bag, a jettison space bag on the space station that holds all their trash. And the issue was that the bag was introducing new smells onto the space station. So, my job was to make a new bag that would keep as many smells inside while still staying fireproof. So, me and my crew actually came together, and we made a bag that was fireproof, waterproof, and kept all smells inside of the bag. So, that was my project.
Okay, let's try this again. So, my project was, we had to basically improve upon a pin kit, which had, like, alligator clips and stuff like that. So, what we ended up doing was a almost complete redesign of it to make it easier to handle for the astronauts and make it so it would be easier to take things out and put things back in more efficiently.
Hi, I'm Briggs Klein. I'm from Space Coast. So, the project that I worked on was, I decided to work with the zero-gravity mouse container. So, the problem they were having is they didn't really have an effective way to take the mice from the habitat they lived in the space station to the place they got tested on in the facility. So, I designed, it essentially looks like a massive pill, that you can go and you can scoop up the mice and lock it together. It's a very simple locking mechanism. And the thing's about this big, where you can use it to either hold multiple mice, or you can use it to hold multiple, like a wrap. And you could take that and break in half, and there's lids that you can use to make them into two separate containers, where if you have to take mice to two different locations, or if, say, you have mice that are not getting along, and there's something happening, and they're fighting each other, you can isolate the one in the container and have the other ones go along with it. So, it's designed as an easy way to hold it. It's designed with a decagon on the outside, so it's 10 different faces, so it doesn't roll for a practical ground application, and it's also made for zero-gravity application. And that's my project.
Hi, everyone. My name's Lisa Passarelli. I'm an engineer out at NASA. And just to kind of summarize some of the challenges, every year at the beginning of the school year, we come up with a list of design challenges for the students. There's usually 15 to 20 challenges. And some of the things they have to consider is, the item's going to be used or the problem needs to be solved in a microgravity environment. One of the students mentioned about using a vice. If you think about, could you use a vice if you were underwater in a swimming pool in scuba gear? You're floating, you can't really put much torque on a vice underwater. So, kids have to kind of wrap their head around it. For the low-smell trash bag, we're used to having our trash picked up once or twice a week, right? We do jettison the trash overboard on station about once a month. So, that's a long time for a tuna can or some other kind of food to... So, that's where the smells came from. The pin kit was lots of little pieces. As soon as you open a pocket, things can float out because there's no gravity. So, they had to plan. And a lot of times when, in zero-gravity, the crew member, the astronaut, is holding on, so you have to do things with one hand, and it'd be operated by one hand. So, they had a lot of challenges that they had to overcome, and they did a great job. Quick summary, the lead of this project from JSC saw over 300 projects in about a month-and-a-half time period. Those projects were selected down to 75 teams, and five of our teams from Brevard County got selected to bring their designs to Johnson Space Center.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. And first, those are the first teams in the entire state of Florida to earn this recognition. Just to put everything in context, when I was their age, I was preoccupied trying to fix facial acne, and, like, they're solving real problems, so...
That's fantastic. Congratulations. I cannot wait to hear how it goes out at Johnson. It's a great environment, some amazing people there as well. I think I skipped myself, and I don't want to leave out just one thing that I wanted to talk about, and Ms. Belford kind of mentioned it, the retreat process, just so the public understands. Back when Dr. Blackburn got hired, the board sat down with him, and we figured out the best ways to have effective governance. And so, added to our normal workshops, which are more of a formal setting, where we have presentations and we discuss items that we're obviously not going to vote on at that time, but that may come to a vote later, we use the retreat process to streamline our processes that are how we communicate with each other, how we bring items forward for discussion and that type of thing. So, things that we wouldn't normally vote on, but from a governance process are extremely important to keep the efficiency of the board moving forward. And so, I just wanted to thank all the cabinet members and Dr. Blackburn for their commitment to that process. It is a unique time where we get to sit down as a five-member board with our superintendent that obviously works for us directly, but then his immediate reports that also sit down with us, and we get to share ideas on how to make this district more efficient and improve excellence across the board. This year, we introduced a board, a 360-board evaluation process that we just had phenomenal feedback on from the cabinet, looking at the board on how we do business and how we can do better. And so, I just applaud you all to that commitment to that process, and I look forward to it continuing going forward. So, thank you very much, Dr. Blackburn, and your entire staff. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have one resolution, one presentation, 19 consent items, two action items, and one information item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Under the, under consent, there were three additions. Item F-11 on student expulsions, item F-16 on suspension of instructional employee, and item F-19 on field trip Palm Bay Magnet High School and Space Coast Junior/Senior High to attend the critical design review at Johnson Space Center in Houston. Action item G-30 on purchasing solicitations was revised.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Deskovic, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We are now at resolutions and proclamations. Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, we have one proclamation to designate April as Parental Alienation Awareness Month.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Deskovic, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Ms. Belford?
So, I've been taking a look at this proclamation, and I'm going to be voting against it, but I think it's important for people to understand why I'm voting against it. My concern is the absoluteness of the language in the fact that I struggle with saying that every parent should always be in a child's life. I understand this is a big issue that we face in the district where two adults can't get along, and so children are swept into the middle of that, and it's something that we face on a regular basis. And I think, for the most part, adults should get along for the sake of the children. And I do think that that relationship is important. But the absoluteness of the language in this resolution that indicates that all parents should always have access to their children and that all children suffer if all parents are not in the picture is just a struggle for me. So, I understand both sides of the issue. I just can't support the absolute statement that comes out in this particular language.
Mr. Ziegler?
I was going to say a similar thing in that we all, I don't think anybody in this organization would support a parent not being involved in a child's life, but I, a couple issues, one of which is, is this almost feels like a homegrown resolution. Apparently, there's no support for this nationally, nor does anybody else ever pass a resolution like this. It also concerns me that in legal situations where a parent is not supposed to have access to the child, it may empower that parent to think that they do have that right. So, I don't think this is as cut and dry as most resolutions, which typically are benign. This one, I think, has some other impact on a child's life, and I'm, which makes me wonder, why hasn't anybody else in the country, any other school district, passed this? So, I'm also not going to be supporting it.
Is there any more discussion? I'll call the question. The motion passes 3-2. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to our presentation.
Tonight, our chief financial officer, Penny Zirker, will provide us with an audit update. Mrs. Zirker?
Good evening.
We're here for our second audit update. We had our first one in December. We'll be doing these, just as a reminder, quarterly, following the audit committee's meeting and approval. This is, our action is to be transparent, make sure you, as well as the public, know how we're doing on our audits. Tonight, we're going to go over the half-cent cell surtax audit, a follow-up on our Transportation Services Department, a follow-up report on our internal audit for school accounts. We're going to talk briefly about the external and internal system penetration assessment and the educational technology risk assessment, but those are confidential reports because they impact our security. All of these reports were presented to the audit committee on March 2, 2018, and was accepted by the committee. The half-cent cell surtax, this is, the primary purpose is testing our financial reporting to the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. It checks for the appropriateness of the expenditure according to the referendum, the existence of documents to support it, as well as the accuracy and valuation of the expenditure. It is our fifth audit since the inception of the half-cent cell surtax, and this audit period was from July 1, 2017, through November 30. Procedures that were tested were revenues, expenditures, and the procurement process. No exceptions were found in detailed testing, and we received a good audit on this report with no findings. The second is the Transportation Services Department Audit Follow-Up. On November 6, 2016, an audit report was issued on Transportation Services Department. The subjects covered were inventory, fuel, and purchasing card procedures. There were 10 audit observations. In the follow-up, the summary of the observation status, eight were closed, two remain open. The remaining ones are the implementation of a facility maintenance information system should resolve the final two. And just to look at what those were, remaining open is business operations monitoring. On a positive with that, while still open, the risk was reduced from a high risk to a moderate risk. Core charges, credits, and warranty revenue still remain open and at high, and that's because to try and manually keep up with this is very difficult. The new software coming in will allow us to close that and correct it. All of the other findings have been corrected. Internal audit follow-up for timekeeping. These are timekeeping procedures that our employees, non-instruction employees, do. The audit report was issued in May of 2012. It was to determine the effectiveness and timeliness of our actions. There were three audit observations. Two have been closed, and one remain open. The one that remains open is a criticism of our current manual timekeeping process, that employees fill out a form indicating their hours worked. That is entered by a payroll clerk or secretary at the location and then verified and processed. The recommendation we still carry forward is to automate that, and that would come as we move forward with decisions on what we may do with our current system. Advertising revenue was another one of the internal audit follow-ups. It's from a report of June 2015. There were three audit observations, monitoring and reporting of school... There were three audit observations, monitoring and reporting of school-level advertising, compliance with agreements, and automation of key processes. All currently remain open. And government and community relations is working with financial services to reach satisfactory resolutions such as automating key processes. We want to be sure and we're working with current processes and financial services and that purchasing's in on the compliance agreements. We have everything going. So, we're working very closely this year to make sure that can get closed. Other topics that came up in the internal audit follow-up was the May 2013 audit report on contract administration. There were six observations. They have all been closed. December 2016 on the Goldskey Safety Compliance, this is for our after-school care program, there was one observation and it's verified closed. October 2017, audit reports issued on schools' internal accounts district level. One observation remains open and that's the implementation of centralized internal accounts, which we are in the process of doing that plan and it will be going into effect with the new school year, beginning with a pilot and have them completed by the end of the year with all eighty-two schools participating. I'm hoping for January 1st, but my town, my team is giving me the under-promise over-deliver. A copy of the audit report can be obtained by contacting my office. It's also available on the agenda for the board. If there's any questions, they can contact me. Does the board have any questions?
Any questions? Comments? Ms. Zirker, thank you very much. Outstanding presentation as usual and thank you for your dedication to the transparency of our audit process. And again, to our audit committee members who are not here but may be watching, thank you for your dedication and volunteerism to help us in this regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. One moment, please. Okay. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Thank you, Pam. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no action will be taken this evening by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with immediate concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, or request that a staff member respond more fully following the board meeting. These responses and requests will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I respect that you, request that you speak into the microphone and state your first and last name and subject topic. We have, one moment, please. We have thirty-four signed, speakers signed up. As per our board policy, we will take the first ten, continue with our normal meeting to get through our consent and action items and then return for the rest of the public comment. We've also asked that the speakers that have identified them as students, I've moved them to the front so that as they may have homework to get back to and we do appreciate our students being involved in the public comment process, want to make sure that they are heard, and also the topics that are not associated with school safety and/or some other issues in that regard. And a lot of that reason is, is that we are not even discussing that tonight, nor we have anything on our agenda regarding that. The MOU that is on our agenda is to authorize the additional SROs that were provided for in this last budget and now, we have an MOU with the sheriff to add those four additional SROs at the schools that are annotated in that budget item and that is what that MOU is in District Security F-27 is in regards to. We are not discussing anything to do with any of the programs that the sheriff has recommended. We are still in the process of evaluating those things and working with him to further understand his overall viewpoint of complete district security. So, that being said, I will tell you that for those of you who haven't been here, we have a clock that counts down from three minutes. It does give a little chime, so please be cognizant of that clock and that helps us get through, make sure everybody gets their opinions heard or their voice heard and we can move forward. I'd also ask that you keep any comments or cheering of that nature down. This is a professional meeting and we want to make sure that we understand and hear each of your comments, including the names of the next speakers, so that we can take appropriate notes and make sure that we have all of the information that you are about to share with us. So, we do appreciate that. So, let us start with, I will call names in groups of three and then you just keep coming up after that. So, we'll start with Carly Hudson, followed by Chloe Wheeler, and then Adam Lowell. So, Carly Hudson.
I'm just gonna leave this here. I don't have any kind of speech prepared today, but I do have an announcement. As you guys went, each of you had an announcement. In last school board meeting, I came up and shook, tried to shake each one of your hands and invite you to the march that I planned this past Saturday. This past Saturday, three thousand guests showed up to my march across the O'Gallie Causeway. Twelve of your Brevard Public Schools, high schoolers helped me plan it and it shows a lot about you guys that I invited all of you and I didn't get any support or back from that. I think that, as I've heard you all speak very highly of every other Brevard County school and the students that were at this, doing all different events, the space event, stuff like that, even though it was an outside-of-school kind of planned thing, we didn't, there was twelve schools represented there and that shows a lot that none of you guys were there to support it. Tina, we'll be seeing you tomorrow at the town hall meeting. I'll look forward to what you have to say, but expect us here. We are totally against this whole guardian program coming. I don't think it's logical in the least bit to have teachers armed. I think that everybody that follows me will have lots of questions for you and I do think that you guys should take those into careful consideration when you're talking about your students' lives and I'm sure that you guys will hopefully make the right decision. But that's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks for not coming.
Chloe Wheeler, Adam Lowell, and Rebecca Freeman.
Gina, fourteen, member of the Winter Guard and the school marching band. Cara, fourteen, danced at the Drake School of Irish Dance. Elena, fourteen, volunteered at Hurricane Irma to help the helpless. Meadow, eighteen, just accepted to Lynn University in Boca Raton. Your child, who could be making great grades, or another who could be playing sports for their high school. There is a chance they will not be able to do that anymore. All of these children were and are frightened, but the first four are no longer with us. They are not the only ones who are scared. We are speaking today not just as the afraid, but as the driven. Students were never prepared to feel the fear we have felt this past month. I used to feel as if nothing could be done, but I realized I was wrong. Now, I feel foolish and I feel foolish for not speaking up. Over the past weeks, there has been a very eerie feeling walking through the halls. A nationwide threat along with two threats directed towards satellite have put everybody on the edge. A recent fire drill instilled a fear in myself that had us paralyzed, repeating no, tears falling up in my eyes and waiting to hear what might be the first gunshot. Imagine your children thinking the same things. Yes, I may have seemed dramatic, but the trauma my peers and I are subjected to due to the people like Nicholas Cruz and isn't being mediated by you is in our minds, in all of us. Every night, my father hugs me to bed. He tells me he loves me and he calls me after school. There are parents who cannot do this anymore. The thought of that alone is enough to make us break down. During the drill, I looked around and saw kids panicking but also joking, even though we could have been sitting ducks. I implore you, kids, parents, teachers, the situation we are presently in is not a joke. Let's break this down. According to the Gun Violence Archive, which compiles data from shooting incidents, a mass shooting is a broadly defined incident. Said person kills four or more people at the same time or location. If you use this definition, from January 2017 to November 2017, there were three hundred and seven mass shootings. That averages to about seven mass shootings a week. The government has never defined a mass shooting as a standalone category. Let's go with the most commonly accepted definition from the Congressional Research Service. A shooting in which a gunman kills four or more people selects random victims, which is ruling out gang killings or the killing of multiple family members, and also attacks in a public place. That definition rules out the Congressional baseball practice shooting in June because the gunman didn't kill more than four people. In September, a man shot and killed eight people in Plano, Texas. But that attack doesn't count either because police say the gunman had a connection to the house. Using that narrow definition to the Gun Violence Archive numbers, we have seen ten deadly mass shootings from January 1st to November 5th. That averages to once per month.
Adam, Adam, and then Rebecca Freeman, followed by Vanessa Skipper.
Experiencing the shock and peer, this, experiencing the shock and fear this past month have put many thoughts of reform in our minds, from mental health to gun laws. Whether you're Democratic or Republican, left or right side, elephant or donkey, we cannot take sides on this unilaterally affecting issue. Coming together will not instantly fix everything, but looking into the gray area and exercising common sense regarding legislation will help us avoid the persistence of the myriad of problems that the lack of compassion and the lack of security can cause. There are no ways to solve this truly senseless conflict unless we come together as neighbors rather than staying divided and divisive because of the reactionary tendency of the American shock response. We as students can no longer be told that nothing is wrong by various levels of administration. There are glaringly obvious answers to the overwhelming negativity of the recent weeks. For example, on February 23rd, Governor Rick Scott spoke about how students should have access to one-on-one counseling with a mental health professional. While we're fighting in our district for that to happen, it isn't happening and that's a shame. That being said, if you're not able to speak with your parents in conjunction with a mental health professional, that professional should be available in full confidentiality. Confidentiality is amongst the highest priority demands of students because of its well-known absence from its consideration in our needs. Despite the turmoil, today, we as students aspire to take a substantial step towards improving the physical and mental safety of our schools by demanding that we, the students, are heard. What community we do have is afraid and on edge. We are enraged and we are no longer able to be complacent. Nothing we can do will ever completely halt tragedies like ones that occur too frequently at Satellite High and across the nation. However, we do demand change. The lack of community while we are all reeling from tragedy is one of the roots of the problem. Between seven forty-five minute classes per day, five days per week, students sacrifice the ability to create the community that we need because our time is increasingly stretched too thin. Additionally, at Satellite High, we are still feeling the reeling effects of previous shortcomings. Last year at Satellite High, two seniors died by suicide. Because of the events of last year, teachers at Satellite High arranged a motivational speech by Mark Marrow. However, the speech cost $2,700 and only $1,000 were provided by the district. Derek Fortmeyer, a sophomore at Satellite High, died by suicide the night of that presentation and was not able to attend that presentation because he was an underclassman because we didn't have enough funding to allow for two separate presentations that day. Obstacles like this that the teachers and administration have been required to navigate through also substantially contribute to the absence of a tightly-knit community of students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Vanessa Skipper, and then Molly Dillman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Freeman and I go to Vieira High School and I want to talk to you about my day on February 14th, 2018, also known as the day of the Stoneman Douglas School Shooting. I came home from school that afternoon and noticed my mom watching the news. Immediately, I saw that there was another school shooting. A few moments later, I came to the realization that that was my best friend's school. Zach Coatsir and Gabe Glassman, two of my close friends, along with the rest of their school, were currently in the middle of such a horrific experience. The hard thing was that all I could do at the time was sit there and pray that my friends and their classmates would be okay. There was nothing I could do about it. I felt helpless. I am never going to forget the feeling I got when Zach texted me about what had happened to the innocent people at his school. Later that night, I was scrolling through Snapchat and I saw a video posted of the school shooting, something sadly, I will never be able to unsee. A group of students and a teacher laying on the floor, their lives flashing before their eyes. Then it hit me, I could have lost my best friend. This could have happened to any of us. It breaks my heart to think about all the students that go to Stoneman Douglas now must attend school every day, remembering the awful tragedy on February 14th. School for them will never be normal again. We all shouldn't have to live in fear and putting guns in classrooms is not the answer. Teachers are trained to teach, not trained to be a sharpshooter. Arming teachers is not a solution for making students feel safe. Students would be surrounded by the weapons like the ones that have been used to kill the seventeen victims at Stoneman Douglas and other schools around the country. The only thing that will help us feel safe are stricter gun control laws. School should be a place where everyone feels secure. Lately, this has been a huge challenge, not only for Stoneman Douglas, but for schools all around the U.S. We deserve to have a normal high school experience. Therefore, we as a community, including teachers, administrators, school board members, and even students who will soon be able to vote, need to push for stronger gun control laws. Please put this issue on your agenda. To borrow Gandhi's quote, "Be the change that you want to see in the world." I'd like to finish off by saying, "Let's make the change that we want to see in the world." Thank you.
Vanessa Skipper, Molly Dillman, and then Oscar Rivera.
Good evening. Vanessa Skipper, English teacher at Coco High School and Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I am speaking tonight to ask every member on that panel, Dr. Blackburn, everybody in leadership at this district, to listen. There were many speakers last school board session that spoke to you about being adamantly against the arming of teachers in classrooms and I'm really not quite sure that anybody was listening to those speakers. And at first, I thought, as teachers packed this boardroom, meeting after meeting, when we were fighting for things like job security for our newer teachers, salary raises, benefits, I thought, well, they just really must not want to listen to teachers because speaker after speaker after speaker after speaker. And we had to fight so hard at the bargaining table just to get a simple decent, well, not decent, I'm not calling it decent, a simple raise that sorta kept up with inflation and job security for more than fifty percent of teachers in our district. And then I sat last meeting and listened to over, I think, fifty speakers speak against. And then I heard the comments coming from the board, basically, kind of almost placating the audience, telling them to hush. There wasn't much listening that went on at the last session. If you're listening, and I am so, so, so proud of every student in this county, especially the ones that just got up here and spoke. Sometimes, it can be easy to focus on everything that is wrong in our society and as I'm watching the students of this nation, of this county, rise up and say, "Enough," I am so excited because guess what? They're going to the polls this year and they're going to the polls in 2020. And I couldn't be more proud to be an educator in this country than I am right now. There are- There are 82 public schools in this county, 82. There are 36 of those schools that have full-time school resource officers in them. There are one, two, three armed law enforcement officers in this room right now. Three. We have one at Coco High School, and we have the biggest acreage campus in this entire district. But we need three for this room? Why? I'm excited to know that we are going to get four more school resource officers. We need them. We also need to understand that we cannot make comments celebrating the actions of our legislative delegation if they're not willing to throw enough money towards us to make sure that we have enough school resource officers on every campus. It is our duty to serve every student in this district with excellence as the standard. Saying our legislative delegation is doing their jobs when they're not funding enough for school safety, yes, we got more. Is there enough? No. And what's going to happen next? Are we going to ask teachers to say, well, you know, we'll just forego raises this year, you know, the ones that barely keep up with inflation, so we can put more school resource officers in our classrooms? Don't ask teachers to balance the budget on our backs anymore. Because when a student shows up hungry to my classroom and says there's no food in her house, and I go and buy a month's worth of groceries for that student, thank you for volunteering. You didn't have to do that, but thank you. Stop asking teachers to do things that we are not, we should not be doing, namely, arming us, namely, giving up salary dollars to take care of something that our legislators should take care of. Thank you.
Hi.
Oscar Rivera. And Ronald Bradley.
I'm a mother, and I vote. According to Wayne Ivey's appearance on Space Coast Daily TV, you all already had a plan in the works to arm school personnel before the recent Marjory Stoneman Douglas tragedy. Given the time you've had to create this plan, I'd like some answers to the following questions for you guys to mull over. To my knowledge, no part of the Guardian program specifically allot money for the inevitable insurance increase should your insurance company still carry you. So I'm just wondering where we will receive that money? Will you look to taxpayers for that money? Take it out of their programs that you're currently using, that you currently need, that we currently have to have, like mental health? Will you take it out of teacher salaries? Will armed personnel need to obtain their own insurance? Like, will the teacher whose gun goes off accidentally or gets taken by another student? Are you going to back them? Are we going to have insurance for them? You say the personnel who are armed will remain anonymous. I know exactly who at my school wants to carry at this point. For the protection of those kids, for a fellow mom sitting in the audience at that school, I've told her who those people are. But then again, the physical presence of a firearm is going to give it away. And when SpaceX or whatever, Grumman, whoever, one of the wonderful companies that provides us jobs, adds to our property value, when they decide, are they going to add more jobs? Are they going to grow their company? Are, you know, our property value is going to go up because they're coming to town? No, they're not, they're not going to want to come to Brevard County Arm Everybody Town where everybody has gone into this Wild West mode. This isn't, this isn't the community that... I asked my realtor when I moved here four years ago, I said, I want to look at that school and that school and just in that region, because those are A schools, those are great schools. There are so many holes in this program, and you keep telling us not to bring it up. But it is shaking us to our core, and we cannot talk about anything else until we know that our kids are safe. If you proceed with this program, each and every one of you will be responsible for the inevitable tragedy or accident that occurs. There will be no going back. There will be lives lost, and this community, which I have come to call my own, which I love very dearly, will be broken. Thank you so much for listening.
Ronald Bradley. And Daniel Batshelder.
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn, Chairman Craig, school board members, and concerned citizens. My name is Oscar Rivera, and I'm a resident of Merritt Island. I'm here tonight to speak against arming school personnel. First of all, congratulations, Dr. Blackburn, for your appointment to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission. I know that you would represent the citizens and not special interests. Two weeks ago, I came in front of you to share my perspective on this very issue. As a parent of two school age children, as a spouse of a schoolteacher, and as a clinical social worker, I suggested and recommended five ideas to your board. One, opt out of the idea of arming school personnel. Two, create a community-based program to help with safety in schools. Three, collaborate with the sheriff department to add school resource officers. Four, hire more social workers. And five, honor the class size amendment. You're very busy, and I know that. I follow up with an email to all of you, but you have not responded yet. I am looking forward to your input on this matter. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a few concerns. As you well know, Florida Today will have, will be hosting a town hall on this topic. Two concerns. One, I tried to register, but the event was at capacity. That was last week. Two, when I looked at the panel, it seems like one side only. We need to have both sides of the equation to have a healthy and productive discussion. But putting that aside, it is not Florida Today's responsibility to create a space and time to discuss this topic. It is your responsibility as a school board to make sure that there is a time and space to have a healthy and productive discussion on this topic. Your mission statement reads, "To serve every student with excellence as the standard." And from your side, while serving in the board, each member shall agree to abide by the following code of ethics. And I will read two. First, and I quote, "Encourage ongoing communications among board members, the board, students, staff, and the community," end of quote. The second code of ethics that I'm going to read to you is, and I quote, "Render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment rather than succumb in the influence of individual or special interest group," end of quote. So I encourage you to schedule a date and time to have public discussion about not arming school personnel. Invite schoolteachers, administrators, and staff to the event. You can do it by district or by school-run town hall setting. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to your action.
Ronald Bradley, followed by Daniel Batshelder.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Blackburn. First of all, I'd like to thank the ones that had the auto show a couple of weeks ago. They did a fantastic job for just starting, and they had over 200 cars. And Brian Ordner from Merritt Island High School, they made all the trophies, and I got one. I'd rather have that than any bought one that ever was. My question is, board members, when you come into this building tonight, did you think how many trades was, when they built this building, how many trades was involved in this building? Would you want to make a guess? Well, I wrote down, there's 23 trades that made this building available. I'm a retired pipe fitter, and I'm proud to be a union pipe fitter. And I'm an air conditioning technician, and I've done automobile mechanics. So from what I understand from some of these students, I think we ought to have a couple of students on the school board. So that... I don't understand. I've been doing a lot of research, and there's a lot of schools that are bigger than this district that pay more for their students' education than Brevard County does. And there's a lot of counties that pay a lot more for their teachers than they do in Brevard County. Now, they got a wonderful automotive department. They got a lot of funds. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to give you all something to read. It's from a small school in Illinois. You can share this, because I don't want to spend all my money on printed copies. Another one is accounting, this is put on by the Washington Post, about what they're doing with students and how they're building and how they're doing that with their training. Now, this little school district in Illinois that's only got less than a thousand students, they build dog houses, any little building you want at your house, and you pay for it, and they get to learn in the trades. So I think that's a fantastic avenue, and it doesn't cost that much to get the building trades in the school system. Thank you very much.
You could just hand it to Ms. Escobar. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Batshelder.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Batshelder. I'm here as a Brevard public parent. It is said that we must take emotion and passion out of these discussions. How can we? Children are dying, and the solutions are obvious. The situation is desperate and frustrated by misguided leadership. It is said that we must remain objective in the face of a complex situation, but the situation is simple. The Second Amendment is not more important than the lives of our children. Uncontrolled access to weapons gives uncontrollable people the opportunity to create uncontrolled deadly situations. It is said that we must wait for more statistics and data, but we have the statistics and data, and we've had them for years. More guns equal more gun deaths, accidental and not. And for a county concerned with student suicides, adding guns into schools gives these students the means to meet their motives. It is said that we must consult with Sheriff Wayne Ivey, but Sheriff Ivey is the laughing stock of the world in a stain on Brevard County. To follow the advice of this person is to knowingly jump off a cliff. He thinks we are, and I quote, "at war," that we must fight this battle on the front end, and he advises us, "Carry your gun with you at all times possible." This man is bloodthirsty. This man is an encourager of violence. He is not the example we should be setting for our children. Please do not be bullied, intimidated, or otherwise pressured by a warmongering sheriff determined to turn our schools into killing zones. He is taking advantage of the recent massacres to ram his own fetid agenda into the heart of our community. Stomp is a plan plagiarized from Polk County. Stomp is a plan with a poor and potentially provocative choice of acronym. Rather than stomping on potential mass shooters, we end up stomping on the education our children deserve and the teachers wanting to serve every student with excellence as the standard. Resource officers are the likely solution, but they are claimed to be too expensive. However, I've noticed today's MOU provides four more R SROs. Thank you. But the armored transport services bid for a mighty $555,180 could no doubt be better spent. Make the sensible, safe, and secure choice. Opt out of arming school personnel. Through accidents alone, the blood of our children will be on the hands of the persons that make the decision to increase the number of firearms on school campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batshelder. That is our first 10 speakers, and that moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are 19 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
What are the wishes of the board? Or, I'm sorry, does any board member wish to pull any items off of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr.?
Not the consent, the action.
Okay, this is consent.
Yep.
Anything on consent? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept those consent items. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? The motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
We have two. We have two items, and the first item is G29 on department-school-initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn.
Next is item G30 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
I would like to pull the armored car transport services in, for bid, item I.
So are you asking, are you, if you'd like to make that a separate agenda item, you need to make a motion to...
I'm making a motion.
So...
Yes, I'd like to discuss the motion.
I make a motion to exclude transportation for this item and make it separate.
Hearing a motion by Mr. Ziegler, do is pull item 31I for discussion and vote on the rest of 31. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Deskovich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion passes. Now we are at 31 decimal or...
No, no, we still have to vote. We voted on the...
I'm sorry, you're right.
We voted on the amendment, now we vote on the amended.
We vote on the amended. Now it is time to vote on the G30.I, which is titled...
Armored.
Armored Transport Services Rebid. What are the wishes of the board?
Point of water.
Sir?
We have not passed the purchasing, we have not passed the purchasing solicitations because we voted on the amendment. Once, well, once the initial motion is amended, we then have to vote on the initial motion, which would be the balance of the purchasing solicitations. All we did is voted to exclude it.
Understand, okay.
So I want to make sure we do that correctly since there's money involved.
Then I will call the question for the approval of item G30 with the exclusion of the amended item 30.I.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Now we're at a vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes. We are now at 30.I, and we need a motion to open discussion on that. Is there a motion to approve 30.I, Armored Transport Services Rebid?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler, and now discussion, Mr. Susan.
So as everybody knows, this has been a thorn in my side from the beginning. The basic premise behind this is that there are so many other things that we could spend money on besides an armored car for pickup. The difference between actually having somebody pick up our, the justification for having them pick up with an armored car at our schools on almost every point is incorrect. them pick up with an armored car at our schools on almost every point is incorrect. And I've put together this counterpoints to the armored car proposal and I was hoping that I could get a couple of minutes to just go through them and explain them. The first piece is, the proposal significantly reduces the amount of deposits at each school, leaving more cash on hand, which causes greater risk for bookkeeper theft and criminal break-ins. It also, cost to the district could be better spent on more urgent priorities such as school resource officers, security cameras, et cetera. The cost justifications of saving it are incorrect. A bookkeeper has never been robbed and to date, no known workers' comp claims have been due to deposits being made. These are the three points provided to justify this proposal, which I feel, because these counterpoints are made, argue that this is not a justified proposal. If you take a look at the reduction of deposits totals on each sites, I pulled a various ones from our districts, you can see that Vera High made 333 deposits. According, last year, according to the armored car pickup, we would only be receiving 144, which is a difference of 189 deposits. If you go on down, all the way down to Creel who made 293 deposits, according to the armored car pickup, it would roughly be 72 pickups, which would be 221 deposits. Now what that does is because of the reduction of deposits, that means that that cash will be on hand more often. If you turn to the next piece, the next page that I put together, there's a list of all of the different deposits. Now, here's where it gets even more. The cafeteria makes deposits, the school bookkeeper makes deposits, and the aftercare makes deposits for each school. If you total those up, there's numbers ranging between 200 and 500 deposits for each school during the entire case of the year, which if you have an armored car come pick up, at various times, you're only hitting them between 72 and 144 times. This significantly reduces the amount of pickups throughout the entire district. Now I will tell you that one of the justifications for this that I was going to move on to next is the cost. The cost justification comes from two pieces. One, the already existing salaries that we would be paying anyway, along with the mileage that we pay, which is close to about $51,000 for these people to make the deposits. Now if you go back to the second page and you look at all of these deposits being made by three different entities at each school, if you reduced those three entities to one, which is what the armored car proposal is anyway, you would reduce the amount of money that's needed to have already existing mileage for each one of these deposits down from 51,000 probably to around 20,000 to 25,000. That's not a given number, but that's just an estimate. So if you look at the cost of the armored car, which is roughly $185,000 per year, you deduct at most the $51,000 for those mileage. You have a rough estimate of about $133,556 that we would spend every year to have an armored car come to the district, not a savings which is promoted inside of the proposal. The difference is, is that the savings, and this is what we were dealing with with the Kelly Services, is that it's not a savings if a bookkeeper's going to be sitting there doing work anyway. So we have to come up with the cost of 133 to 165,000 a year on top, which in my mind, that would be better served to go after getting two to three more SROs, which was why I made a motion and tried to have board discussion last time, to table this until after we've evaluated all of the SROs that are needed and the costs than the doughnut hole that we have. If this right now is not needed to be put into place until next year. So there is no rush between now and say, April or May to make this decision. I think it's a, it would do a due diligence to look at this as a proposal and say, does this, in the event that we come to a point where we can't fund all of our SROs, I could not consciously look and say, we can fund an armored car for two or three of those, or for our entire district, but we're going to leave two or three of our schools vulnerable. That's pretty much the argument that I have. The other, the other piece that I have here is, is that the risk of the bookkeeper theft and the criminal break-ins also increases with the reduction of the deposits. You have some of these schools, like Manatee, some of your higher affluent schools that have deposits every day and sometimes two times a day, along with the high schools. By significantly reducing that, we make those targets. Now, I put together a couple other pieces of paper I just wanted you guys to look through. Attached on the second page, if you look through it, is each one of the schools and it has when they're being picked up, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, and it shows how many. So basically, each elementary school is now only going to be picked up twice and each high school is going to be picked up four times and each middle school would only be picked up twice. What this means is, is that the schools that have all of that cash on hand will not be able to be picked up for those two days. The other thing is, is it doesn't discriminate between the schools that have 62 deposits a year or this ones that have 300 deposits a year. So just looking at the actual schedule, we should be picking up from some more and some others less. If you continue to look down through the pages and you come to the final proposal, which was what was inside of the cost benefit analysis, it's this piece right here, if you look at this. You'll find that in the second box from the bottom, it says, "This service would improve the safety and security of district personnel traveling to branch, bank branches and mitigate the risk of personal injury liability claims." Per the email that I received from Ms. Zirker today, we have, she still needs to look into it, but she says that she did not know of any as of now. Here's my argument, is that yes, it may reduce that, but if we've never had any in the past, why would we make that as part of our argument? The next one is, is it improves and secures of funds traveling to bank branches and mitigate the risk of lost monies due to criminal activity. We have never had a robbed bank, a bookkeeper in our entire district in the last 35 years when we looked at it. Increases efficiency for cafeteria managers, aftercare coordinators, school bookkeepers, and district personnel to direct work time towards needed sites duties instead of the travel time spent going back and forth between branches. Estimated $282,625 cost savings annually. I agree that putting them somewhere else is needed. No doubt, our bookkeepers, everybody from teachers and everybody are stressed, but here's where it comes down to, that's not a savings. So when we talk about cost savings and hard savings, the cost savings to the district may be that we can allocate people to do different things, but they're still sitting in that seat and they're still going to have to get paid. It says here, "Eliminate the cost related to reimbursement in-county travel for personal going to and back branches, back and forth between the bank branches. Estimated $51,500 in cost savings annually." That could be significantly reduced just by having this one person from the three entities deposited every day. It says, "Aids in the process to centralize deposit reporting and increase the consistency and efficiency of the district deposit review and posting process." I do agree with that. I do that, I do agree that it does assist with that and that would be good, but here's where the premise comes down to. Every time an armored car pulls up to the district or to your school, the teacher's going to look and say, "The reason I don't have what I need in my classroom is because of that armored car." The reason, when the parent is going to sit there and they're going to see, when a parent sits back and says, "Why don't I have an SRO inside my school, but I have an armored car?" And I can't consciously look at that argument and say that we're doing our due diligence here. I've also attached the Internal Accounts Procedurals Manual, which is the next page past that one, and inside of it, it talks about bank deposits. It says, "All monies collected must be deposited intact to the bank as frequently as feasible and dictated by sound business practices. In the event funds collected, must be deposited within five business days after receipt or within three business days after receipt of funds exceeding $200, excluding change in petty funds." Now, this current proposal does that, but the premise behind those bank deposits is that, and if you look at any of the research that's out there, frequently and the most deposits that you can make is the best to reduce risk from theft and criminal activity. We are going the other way with this plan in reducing the amount of deposits that we're actually doing. I gave another form, which is the Cash Handling Procedures, the Six Golden Rules to Reducing Losses, and I would have everybody look to, number one, number one reason to reduce losses is to make daily bank deposits mandatory and predictable. We're going the other way and we're paying more for it and we have an opportunity to pay for SROs. So I wanted to bring these to your attention in the event that you may have any questions, in the event, in the hopes that we could table this to, until we know how much money we need for SROs in the future. And there is no penalty for waiting until after we evaluate the need of our budget to fill our district security plans. Sorry about the long thing. It's been a long time fighting, so, wait.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you. Mr. Susan, nice analysis. I'm the one that had asked early on the process for the labor analysis to figure out what labor time would be solved and is there monetary value? And Mr. Susan, you're absolutely right that we're paying those people anyways, although in my travels, I found some of those bookkeepers go during lunch or after school.
Most of them after school.
And so it's not impacting their workload anyhow. But however, what I was surprised to find from the analysis was not a cost savings, but identification of a process problem. Having a bookkeeper, cafeteria worker, and a after-school person all making independent deposits doesn't seem very efficient. And if you reduce that cost analysis to the number of pickups that they have, the actual cost is a lot less than the cost of the armored car service. While it's a nice thing to do, it's convenient, as we know, this is a reaction to theft, bookkeeper theft, yet it won't stop that. What is being put in place that has better impact on theft is centralized accounts and that finance department will have eyes on what's going on. However, in that process, and I'm still not 100% clear as to how centralizing the bank centralizes the account, but that's created a problem. As a matter of fact, in asking for a very valid reason on why this is necessary, I think I'm the only one that's come up with the valid reason why it's necessary. And that's because we created a situation where we're using Wells Fargo Bank and there are very few in this county and it is an inconvenience now for our schools to make those deposits. They're traveling tremendous distances. You made a comment about mileage being reimbursed. I don't know where that number comes from. I don't know if that's since we changed banks. I don't know if that's the previous year. If it's since we changed banks, then to a single bank, then that has increased our costs. If not, our cost is probably going, going to go up, again, more so justifying it. However, I see more that we've created the need for the armored car as opposed to it solving a problem that occurred prior to the centralized accounts. And you just brought up a good point, Mr. Susan, I hadn't thought about. And I don't know if it's a policy or if it's administrative procedure that requires deposits to be deposited within a certain timeframe and not held onto. So does that mean that that policy has been changed? I don't believe it's been changed if it's in policy. Do you know if it's procedure or policy?
And he, and Dr. Blackburn could probably do a better job. What this does is it conforms to the policy that they could be dinged on because it does give you those windows of three days in between each deposit. The only argument that was being made there was that those deposits, the reason we have that in place is because of the $200 rule. And because of that, shows the urgency to not have cash on hand and that's what that was about.
Yeah, I have issue with the fact that this was put into place as a solution to a problem, but I don't believe it solves the problem that it was put in place for. I think it only solves the problem of having very few branches for schools to visit to make their deposits and it's become very inconvenient. So, I don't have an issue with postponing this until we evaluate SROs, but if we were to vote on it now, I would not support it.
Can I answer to real quick the question? Is that we would do our best to have an evaluation of the cost of the mileage if it was reduced based upon the three and we would also do the best to, as another item that I asked Ms. Zirker if we were going to do and she said we were, was to RFP the internal accounts because we have just put more than $4 million into our internal accounting system and we haven't RFP'd the decision to go with one bank. I feel that there's other opportunities out there that would address these deposits being so far away that we could address. So for instance, SunTrust Bank does all of Medfast's pickups. They literally send to nine locations a person to pick up their stuff. I would guarantee you to pick up their deposits. I guarantee you that if we RFP'd it and we had some outliers, that they would actually send somebody possibly to do it as part of the RFP. It's worth looking at. It's just an idea. It might not be true.
Mr. Craig. Valid point, however, you don't know what the bank fees are in that situation, so unless you go out and RFP. However, there's also, I believe, a mobile services at Sunshine Bank that any business that signs up to do business with them, they'll pick up, they'll pick up their deposits, but I don't know if they have, they have, I think they have only three or four vans on the road is what I'm told. Are you saying, Mr. Craig, only one?
I don't know.
I don't know. I think they have three or four. But if they're going to do that for a small business or organization, you think they might do it. But then again, being a small bank, they may not have the criteria to qualify for handling the amount of money that we deposit. So that's a catch 22 also.
Mr. Deskovich?
I just, I don't want to nitpick, but I do want to make sure we have correct information out here and Matt, your number on the cost of the SRO per year is not accurate compared to just the numbers we got today from the sheriff's office. So, you know, we can't hire him without benefits, so it's 73,000. And then if we gave him a car and armed him and stuff, I think it was upward. 139. So, it's equivalent to one solid SRO fully equipped, I feel like, which is a conversation that's fair to have. I just want to make sure we're not saying one, the armored car would compensate for three SROs because that's not, that's not an accurate statement from the information that we have.
So, currently we have, we pay $33,000 for our SROs for the various places and tonight we're signing an MOU for four for a quarter of a million dollars. So there is some wiggle room in there for possibly two. Does that make sense to you?
Currently in all of our SROs, we're paying $33,000.
No, but in some of them there are. So the argument that where we place this could be less than the $42,000 if the MOUs that we have are with the cities. That's where that comes from. And that $42,000 came right from that piece of paper you're looking at.
Yeah.
Ms. Belford?
Yeah.
Just wanted to ask another clarifying question, just to make sure that we have accurate information out there. And Dr. Blackburn, I don't know if you can answer this or perhaps Ms. Zirker would need to respond, but I'll toss it to you and you can take it from there. So the annual contract amount on this is 185,000. What portion of that is covered by aftercare and cafeteria or is the entire 185,000 coming from our operating budget?
So the 185,000, 70,000 approximately is coming from the operating budget and then 69,000 coming from food service and 44,000 coming from after school. So, and as the board knows, right, the 69,000 coming from food and 44,000 coming from after school, those are not dollars that you can be, that can be used for other operating costs.
So, just to, just to make sure I understand correctly, we have approximately, if we take Mr. Susan's recommendation and we utilize these funds to support additional SROs in schools, we have $70,000 that would potentially be available to support that initiative?
I want to answer that question, but truth be told, it requires me to discuss information regarding what we've been discussing in closed doors, security meetings regarding how much of an increase SROs will cost.
Right.
So I'm going to pause, perhaps seek legal counsel, but I'm going to pause on answering that question.
Okay. And then, Mr. Susan, can I ask you a question? Just something that doesn't make sense to me on here. We have 180 days of school and we have just the bookkeeper at Vera High School making 333 deposits.
Yes.
I'm not sure that I understand that.
You have summer. You have stuff going on during the year. You have, I mean, I, in reading this, they gave bids towards having summer deposits and stuff, but here's what ends up happening. Because of that $200 threshold and they get scared, they'll make a deposit in the morning and then they will literally go by the end of the day and make another deposit because they don't want the cash to be sitting there over the weekend. So you'll see some days where they're doubled up. That's the only thing. And that is a question that I think we should ask the bookkeepers because those numbers, when you start looking at them, are very increased. I mean, Creel by themselves in elementary schools is making 293 deposits. Does that make sense?
It does. I think it speaks to, you know, potentially an additional process issue, but I also think that it, I think it changes the discussion about the frequency of pickups in the RFP because, I mean, if we're, we have 180 days of school and our... because, I mean, if we're, we have 180 days of school, and our, the majority of our schools are going to have 144 pickups. So if we raised efficiency and didn't run to the bank three times as a bookkeeper in one day, we really are not that far off. So not, I'm not trying to argue with you. I just want to make sure once again that we're, I think it's important that we have...
And rightfully so. So there's, so when you get into the nitty-gritty and you're going back and forth with this, that's not where this argument lies for me. Where it lies for me is not the majority of all of that. That's just trying to counter what the argument is to have it. What the bottom line is, are we willing to cut budgets and add $70,000, take $70,000 from our operating budget, knowing that we openly have to go to each one of those people back there and cut their budgets to fill a hole for SROs in the future? That's what this is about. This isn't so much about the nitty-gritty and all the other pieces because honestly, I'd probably lose that battle somewhere in there. But the thing is, is that's where it is. That's what it is for me. If you had to make the argument, that's what it comes down to. I'm just scared we're not going to have enough money for SROs. I've got six Title I schools with no SROs in Melbourne, and I'm scared. And that's what I'm trying to fill. That's what this is.
Is there any more discussion? Mr. Segler?
Mrs. Belford, that's an interesting point. So if a bookkeeper is making multiple deposits, making multiple deposits, obviously, they have some sort of concern driving, forcing them to go to the bank. Will a bookkeeper be prohibited? Anybody know if a bookkeeper will be prohibited from making a deposit under this program? In which case, then you're telling the bookkeeper, well, even though previously you had a concern about what you have on hand, now you're going to be responsible for it until that armored car comes?
There is this option inside the contract to call. For each one of these deposits is $200 or $20 for the armored car to come. The option for an additional one is $75, I think, and Ms. Zirker can talk to that. So if they are concerned, there is an option for them to purchase the more, another one.
Ms. Belford?
I wonder if the bookkeepers are making multiple trips per day because they're uncomfortable taking large amounts of cash to the bank. So if I'm going to the bank, I'm more comfortable taking $400 than I am going to the bank and taking $10,000. Does that make sense? So I'm just speculating. I'm not, but it would potentially be, hey, I'm better off taking a $400 deposit than I am taking, you know...
I mean, that could be for some maybe. I've never had a bookkeeper express that concern, so I can't speculate.
I think, and the other issue that we can also say in regards to this is that in multiple high, we have an SRO in every middle and high school, and in the cases of most of mine in Melbourne, if there's a deposit that's exceeding a certain amount, they will request that SRO to follow them to the bank, and they've done that in the past too. So that's another option that they've done. So I don't know if the high amount is that much.
No, we're taking the SRO off.
Off campus, yeah.
Oh, good discussion. I will just, the only thing I'm going to weigh in about is Mr. Segler said something early on, and I, well, I'm not going to, I will disagree with you, politely disagree. This was not in reaction to any of the bookkeeper issues. When Ms. Zirker was hired, she came in as a CFO with both public and private experience. She has an immense amount of background in this area, has seen a lot of different ways of doing things, and the reason that she brought this forward is because as she has looked over the private and public sector, and I know this because I've had these discussions with her to allay some of my concerns, is this is an industry best practice when you centralize internal accounts, which is at the top of the industry best practice. And there are multiple studies that would show that continuity of funds and continuity of collections are critical to the process of ensuring a steady stream of, or steady flow of the money back and forth. And there's a lot of people that say, well, why do you even take cash anymore? We should put everything on credit cards, and we have iPay things and Samsung phones and all that stuff that can pay it. I would agree. Unfortunately, we do not have that flexibility based off of our two different functions, our ability to transfer that into an accounting process, and also, we do have people that do not have the capability of doing that and that do not have that capability, and we do have people that can only pay in cash. And so we have to honor that. So while it may assist with the bookkeeping concerns, it was never in response to that, and I know that from talking to Ms. Zirker. It is truly based off of the best practices of a centralized internal accounting system that centralized collections be part of that.
Can I? Mr. Susan?
And I did want to extend that, that I did fully support Ms. Zirker centralizing internal accounts. I think it's a great thing for our district to move towards, and I did want to throw that in there. I would, at this time, like to make a motion to table this until further discussion is brought up to where we have a total on the SROs, and we can come back to that.
Second? Mr. Craig? Can I weigh in? Okay.
Can we, well, we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. The motion, if I, since you made it so quickly, Mr. Susan...
Sorry.
I did not get a chance to write it down. Can you please restate that?
Motion to table the item until after we've assessed the amount needed for the SROs and bring it forward to the board after that, if we decide to need it, no later than the end of May.
Ms. Edwald, did you get that?
I was feeling...
Table it until no later than May. Table it till no later than May if we need it, in the event we need it for the SROs.
Do we have to have a specific date for a table?
No.
Well, it can be. You can...
You can have a suggested target date, but you don't have to...
Correct. So then just table it.
If you postpone, you need to postpone to a certain date.
Yeah.
Postpone would be to a certain date. Table would be till later in the same meeting.
Right, so it's really a postponement.
So that's why I'm saying the motion has to be a postpone, which is why I asked if there needed to be a certain date because table means we would talk about it later today, which obviously that's not going to happen.
So postpone it to the last school board meeting in May to give us an opportunity to evaluate it in the event that we could use these savings to pay for more SROs.
Stand by. It's the last meeting. I will renew my second since the motion changed.
So the motion as made by Mr. Susan would be to postpone item G30.I until the May 22nd school board meeting. And Mr. Segler, you have seconded that?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion? Mr., Dr. Blackburn, can you please give us some words of wisdom?
Mr. Craig and members of the board and the listening and present audience, thank you, Mr. Susan, for the description. You started exactly where I want to start with going back to the beginning. The beginning for me starts a little earlier, actually starts before I actually became your superintendent. It starts with, for all practical purposes, a relatively new board elected by this district in 2014, and then thankfully, blessedfully, this superintendent was hired shortly after that, in July 2015. Upon that, as everyone in this audience knows, and this board proceeded to do quite a bit of listening and learning with the internal community and external community. At that time, one of the loudest cries that I heard from inside the organization and around the organization was the need for better fiscal management as a priority of the system. There were several, I will say mishaps and thefts that happened along the way, and one big piece was a concern that this system was now at the billion-dollar, near-billion-dollar annual budget space, and we still had not employed a quote-unquote "traditional" chief financial officer in a system this large. So in April 2016, Mrs. Zirker joined us, another blessing, I believe. And Mr. Craig, you mentioned MBA credentials, CPA credentials, and I won't tell you how many decades she spent in private and public executive leadership because it would give away her age, and I like her too much. But we hired that with three areas of focus: fix past mishaps from a fiscal management perspective, be transparent, and proactively protect the future. Some of the successes to date that Mrs. Zirker has led with the collaboration of this board is a $10 million-plus debt reduction. She has introduced a cost-benefit analysis inclusive of ROI, return on investment, for all items at $100,000 or greater. She has led and created a collaborative slash transparent budget planning process where we look years into the future. We prioritize, even though our funding is limited, we still do that. She's led the creation of, the creative use of non-recurring dollars for some recurring strategic priorities that the board has approved inclusive. And she's also worked with the board to create over $700,000 worth of items that the board was able to work with schools and staffs to allocate. Why centralized internal accounts? And thank you, Mr. Susan, you support centralized internal accounts. We have, these are facts that we are wrestling with as a school system, no surprise to the people that I'm speaking to. We have found weak internal controls. We have a history of audit findings relative to this space. In our most recent joint audit committee board meeting, the audit committee, the people that you appointed to that body, reminded us of audit findings in this space that we've yet to fully correct. We have, what I believe as your superintendent, unreasonable demands placed on our bookkeepers, especially given their compensation. And let's discuss the pink elephant. We know our ability is limited to increase compensation to match their demands. So a move to decrease their demands to their compensation, I feel, is wise. We have high turnover in the bookkeeper position. Centralized internal accounts inclusive of armored cars is a public sector best practice, a private sector best practice. It will reduce the scope of work for our bookkeepers. It will guarantee timely deposits from schools. It does return approximately, you can look at it either way you want to, either 300, approximately $300,000 worth of time employees give back to other tasks, or 13,000 hours of actual time instead of running to and from the bank. If I were to pick one reason to support this, it would be the proactive protection of nearly 224 employees, let me give you the numbers, who are currently transporting over $30 million in cash or checks per year, mainly cash, okay? The cost, I've already mentioned, $185,000, $70,000 of the $185 the board could use on some other item. We know enough to know that that is not going to cover the cost, increased cost of SROs. It's been mentioned, I don't know of any attack on a bookkeeper, any armed robbery situation. Here's what I do know: 224 of our employees are transporting $30 million-plus in cash every year. I wouldn't want to do that. I don't want to be here if the board decides not to do. I don't want to have to defend the decision not to bring in armored transportation when we know of the risk. You know, post-February 14, we're all seeing things just a little bit differently. On July 27, Mrs. Zirker, as part of the budget approval process, did a presentation to the board, and at that time, we were trying to calm some of the concerns that we were hearing, particular to the armored car. We were hearing that we don't want this big gross armored car thing parked in front of our schools because it looks intimidating, like we may have a problem, et cetera, et cetera. So in that presentation, and I can show it to you, there's an X, right? There won't be the marked armored vehicle, but an unmarked armored, an unmarked vehicle. The armored person will go in and out of the school wearing not a concealed weapon, but an open-carry weapon-trained personnel to safely transport these dollars. Post-February 14, where we are having every discussion under the sun around how to protect our schools, and one of those layers being what most people in the audience right now are actually speaking against, but it talks about adding layers of security to our campus. I don't know what the responsibilities would be in the event there's an active shooter on a campus at the same time one of our armed armored car personnel are going in. I don't know when that will happen, but I certainly don't want to be in a position to reduce layers of security. Last but not least, I do want to end, totally end, the responsibility of staff members having to transport cash. They're transporting dollar amounts of cash that I don't want to transport, so I would want to end that. Just recently, earlier this month, and I'm going to be very guarded so as not to announce the identity of the employee, but we did have an employee who left school with dollars and experienced a medical situation that resulted in dollars raised by kids in schools being unaccounted for for five days. Again, I want to end, I'm recommending to the board that we end the practice of employees transporting cash.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Mr. Susan, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, I mean, I can, we can come back and say, and basically, he's right. You have two sides to this. You have the argument that you have 224 employees traveling with $30 million. And the idea is, is that we've been doing it since the beginning of Brevard County history, and we've never had any issues. The other issue is, is that it comes down to where we allocate our resources and how much money we spend and where we put it. And in my mind, this is an allocation towards the wrong area for the spending. I will also say that we are insured. We pay $25,000 a year. We pay $10,000 a year with a $25,000 deductible, so both of our embezzlements cost us $50,000 worth of cost so that we, when we look back at what we returned in receipts, we returned, they returned to us all that we could prove was stolen, and we only ended up having to pay $25,000 on each one of those. So the cost, the argument that we have between us right now is, is this a good allocation of money or isn't it? Is the risk worth the reward of paying it? And that's what it comes down to. That's it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. There are two motions that are open on the table. The first one that we need to address is the motion to postpone to May 22nd board meeting G30.I. Has been motioned and seconded. I'll call the question. All in favor of postponing item G30.I to the May 22nd board meeting? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
You have to vote. The motion fails 2-3, or 3-2. The next motion, then, is to approve item G30.I. It has been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2. We will now take a short break since we are at an hour forty and going, and we will return at 7:35. return at 7:35. We are now at the information agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
There is one item, Mr. Craig, and board members, under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss item H 31?
No.
Hearing none. There are no staff reports, so we are back to public presentations. Just a reminder, we have three minutes. We use the clock. I'll call you up in groups of three. Hopefully, I pronounce your name right. If I don't, I do apologize, and please correct me when you come up. And all the same expectations arise from both sides. So again, we're thrilled that you are still here, and we are going to start with three students that I overlooked because I didn't have them annotated as students. So we will start with Brandon Spurlock, followed by Quinn Westfield and Hunter Law.
Hello, board members. My name is Braden Spurlock. I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm a junior at Satellite High, and I'm also the president of the Republican Club there as well. I came to speak to you on two issues that I'd like to hit in three minutes. One about the Marshall program, which you guys will be voting on soon, that the sheriff has planned out, and also the mental health aspect of it as well. I am, I'm very pro gun, for the most part. I believe the Second Amendment is important, and what it stands for is important as well.
having students that could also pose threats, like the Parkland shooter, he was a former student, and not a way to defend yourself from potential threats. I would like to plead with you, to support the Marshall Program, and to also allocate more funds or more programs to help fix the mental instabilities at Satellite High. Thank you.
Thank you, Braden. Quinn Westfield, followed by Hunter Law, and then, what I meant, Gary Shiffrin.
Thank you, guys, for letting me talk today. My name is Quinn Westfield. I'm a senior at Satellite High School, and I am the vice chairman of the Satellite Teenage Republicans there. And I am quite troubled about the school walkouts that occurred on March fourteenth. I was informed by a teacher that the administration and faculty were allowing a walkout in remembrance of the victims of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School shooting, and that there would be no consequence to the students for skipping class, and that most, if not all, of the administrative body would be participating. And after about a minute of research, I came to realize that this walkout was not in remembrance of those victims. On the official website of the organization responsible for putting together the walkout, Women's March Youth, there is no mention of remembrance whatsoever, only, quote, "to protest Congress inaction, to do more than tweet thoughts and prayers in response to gun violence plaguing our schools and neighborhoods," end quote. I'm appalled that this walkout was allowed to occur. I am attending school in order to further my education and prepare myself for the future, not to be indoctrinated of the political views of the Brevard Public School administrative bodies. There ought to be some sort of consequence to the administrative bodies of the schools that let this take place. The school's administration pushed their political agenda on misinformed students, and this was a gross abuse of power. Why not put together an assembly in the auditorium to talk about the tragedy, and what practices the school is taking to keep students safe? This would have been more productive than walking out of class. I am shocked that the school board wouldn't have been included in this decision. It was not right, it was deceitful, and quite frankly, it was disrespectful to the families of those who lost their loved ones. Using the deaths of seventeen innocent people to further your political agenda is wrong, and that's what this walkout was about, furthering a political agenda, not remembrance. Thank you.
Hunter Law, Hunter Law, Gary Shiffrin, and Jason Friedenland.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Hunter Law, and I'm a junior from Satellite High School, and also the treasurer of the Teenage Republicans there. I'm here today to offer my opinion on the issue of allowing teachers and other staff to carry guns on school campuses. As a student who has attended public school in this district for nearly twelve years, I believe that allowing teachers who have been trained and have the proper licenses to carry guns would generally increase one's comfort while in the school building, and better protect students from potential shootings. A common argument against arming teachers is that we cannot trust them with deadly weapons, because they may snap and start shooting students. Of course, that problem has been addressed already, and Senate Bill seven zero two six signed into law by Governor Rick Scott earlier this year, where teachers are required, quote, "to pass a psychological evaluation," end quote, "to be considered for the program." In addition, teachers would likely have previous experience handling guns under the current requirements, and would have to complete additional training, including several hours of safety training, thus preventing most firearm accidents. Many also argue that no teachers would actually feel comfortable carrying a gun around children. However, this law requires teachers to volunteer, so teachers cannot be forced into any situations in which they would feel uncomfortable. Additionally, there is evidence to suggest that many teachers are interested in protecting their students. Three teachers at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School died putting themselves in harm's way to protect their students, and with a gun in any one of their hands could have saved up to seventeen lives. In an interview with Fox News, Sheriff Richard Jones of Butler County, Ohio, stated that the number of teachers that are volunteering to similar measures is overwhelming. Another suggestion by many is that it would not do any good for more guns to be on school grounds. History, however, suggests the contrary. In nineteen ninety-nine, white supremacist Buford Furrow opened fire on a Los Angeles Jewish community center. The only reason he fired on this JCC was that his three prior considerations, all nearby Jewish institutions, were too well-guarded. In nineteen ninety-nine, Columbine High School in Colorado was shot at, becoming perhaps the most infamous school shooting ever. Though the first school resource officer was introduced in nineteen fifty-three, that position didn't truly become a law enforcement and crime prevention position until the nineteen seventies. Nor did resource officer programs begin to reach its current size until after the Columbine shooting, jumping from being stationed in about one percent of schools in the mid nineteen seventies to about forty percent in two thousand eight, according to two thousand eleven's study. Simultaneously, a study by Northeastern University found that shooting incidents involving students have been declining since the nineteen nineties. These two studies lead us to conclude that the increase of arm cards in schools is proportional to the decrease in frequency of school shootings. Thank you.
Gary Shiffrin, Jason Friedenland, and Arlene Gorgone. Gary, you're here. Gary is left. Jason Friedenland, followed by, what's that? Friedenland, thank you. Arlene Gorgone and Barbara McDonald.
My name is Jason Friedenland. I'm the son of a police officer. I'm a gun owner. I'm a concealed carry permit holder. I'm a registered Republican. I'm a homeowner. I'm a business owner. I'm an employer. I'm a father. I'm a husband. I'm a doctor of veterinary medicine. Before the board is a decision of how to best protect our children and keep our schools safe, to decide whether stomp volunteers or school resource officers are the best suited for this purpose. While Sheriff Ivy has laid out a plan more stringent than the legislatures, it is still a plan based off the fact that we are underfunded, and that does not allow a place in SRO in every school. This is not the situation for a pragmatic or most cost-effective choice. This situation requires the best option, that of the SRO. These men and women will be placed in the potentially most difficult decision to face. When faced with most difficult decisions, we should seek experts. In medicine, to be considered an expert, you have to complete approximately six thousand hours of training. Six thousand hours. Not a hundred and thirty-two hours, as proposed in the Marshall Program. Not a hundred and seventy-six, as proposed in the Stomp Program. While some would argue that former law enforcement or former military provided the needed expertise and experience to play at the table, I would argue that with respect for their service and to my family's own, there is a reason that you are former. At some point in your life, whether emotional, mental, physical, or spiritual, you were no longer able to perform that work. And in this position, we need the best the sheriff has to offer. We need the best that we can bring to bear. As a school board, we know finances are mostly not under your control. So we, as a community, must tell our county commission and our state legislature to properly fund the needed SROs. We must find the will to fund the SRO program. That's us. That's not the school board. But this still starts with our school district opting out of the Marshall Program. Those monies should be sent back to the state to be redistributed in the SRO program. We should be standing together on this issue, not against each other. We should choose the best option. Our families, our children, our community deserve the best choice in this situation. If we choose SROs, you will not stand alone on that topic. We will stand together to find a solution to it.
Thank you. Arlene, Arlene Gorgone, Barbara McDonald, and David Henry.
Two weeks ago, I spoke to you. I stood here and spoke to you. I tried to reason with you. I tried to provide clear, concrete reasons why arming school employees of any type was a terrible idea. Forty-eight Brevard County citizens spoke to you, and that evening, not one person was positive for arming school staff. After that meeting, how many people sent you emails? How many people called you? I've heard that you haven't responded, or the majority of you haven't responded to those people. Last Saturday, over three thousand of us joined the March for Our Lives in Melbourne, partly to make our voices heard that we do not want guns in our schools. It was organized by high school students. How drastic is the situation that our children are now screaming to do something? Not to add more guns to the situation, but to change what has become a nightmare in the United States. So I hear from inside sources that this is already a done deal. How many times, including today, have you met with Sheriff Ivy to discuss this? It's closed doors when security is discussed. When are you going to have a forum to discuss this with us? It appears to me that you don't give a damn about what the people who voted you in or pay your salary want. You are going to do what is advantageous to you personally and financially. If you allow anyone other than resource officers to carry guns in our schools, when something goes wrong, when something backfires, the blood will be on your hands. Do you really want that? You will be accessories to murder. We will hold you accountable. We will let the world know that a child, our children, died because of you. Are you thinking to yourselves that this is ridiculous? Nothing will happen? Do you really want to take that chance? Do you want to put more children's lives in jeopardy just to enhance your personal and professional gains? If you do vote to allow staff to carry guns in school, we are going to demand that each and every one of you explain how you could ignore what the people who represent you are roaring in every way possible that we want. You are all up on that dais because of us. Listen to us. Thank you.
Barbara McDonald, David Henry, and Melissa DeFrancesco.
Good evening. I'm Barbara McDonald, and I'm speaking to you today, not as one parent, but as two. My husband, Sergeant Kenneth McDonald, is currently deployed with the Army National Guard. He is thousands of miles from his home, and our six children, four of whom are school age, and are students in BPS schools. Whereas I live every day afraid that I will have soldiers on my doorstep to tell me that my husband was injured or killed, he lives every day in fear that he will be notified that one of his children was killed in what should be a safe place, their school. He is serving in a real war zone. While you cannot tackle the problems of the country, you can do something for our schools. You can make sure our kids are safe for the seven hours a day they are under your protection. Allowing more guns in schools is not the answer. It will not make our children safer, and it may end up injuring more as they get caught in the crossfire. The Guardian Program, as proposed by Sheriff Ivy to patrol our schools with guns, is turning our schools into a war zone. This is not a solution to the problem. One way in, one way out, more SROs, metal detectors, fences, cameras, monitoring, these are ways we can improve school safety. Bringing more guns into the schools makes them more dangerous. What if a child gets a hold of one of those guns? What if a guardian goes postal? There are too many what-ifs to mention every single one of them. A careful consideration of all the many risks inherent in arming guardians can only force one to conclude that permitting these people to be armed in schools will ultimately kill more children than it saves. I will leave you with one final thought, this one from my husband. Isn't it better to work harder and do more to keep weapons out of our schools than to monitor, secure, and attempt to protect those brought into the school under this program? Thank you.
David Henry, Melissa DeFrancesco, and Dan Bennett.
Good evening. My name is David Henry. Prior service Army, a father, a student in Eastern Florida State College. And I represent the Brevard County, Florida Fathers' Rights Movement. I'd like to thank the board for passing the Parental Alienation Awareness Month proclamation, specifically to Mr. Matt Susan and Tina Desovich and Dr. Beth Thady. Congratulations to Dr. Blackburn for providing leadership to others, and for the good that you do. I'd like to extend, or rather commend, Matt Reed for his transparency to the public, at least. I'm continuing my efforts in ending parental alienation with Patrick Air Force Base Brigadier General Wayne Montieth, Circuit Eighteen Chief Judge John Harris, with County Clerk Scott Ellis, the County Commissioners John Tobia, Rita Pritchett, and Christina Snarney, Space Ghost Lead of Cities Sean Ferguson. I forwarded the proclamation to Governor Rick Scott, and have sought the support of Randy Fine and Thad Altman, and Debbie Mayfield, Florida League of Cities, Florida Association of Counties. I forwarded it to President Trump, and requested support from Bill Posey, Bill Nelson, and Marco Rubio. I support arming our teachers and hiring of our forgotten veterans. Once a soldier, always a soldier. Include a military component, not just BCSO. Shootings are not the only thing impacting students. Suicide, drugs, gangs, criminal activity, early pregnancy, all primarily correlate to issues in the broken home. All too often, we see resources exhausted remove children, when if we consider investing in these families as a whole, the costs would reflect but a fraction. The proclamation was passed, actually, in Sarasota County, Manatee County as well, and some cities also. Texas has about seven jurisdictions that have passed, so the information that I provided earlier was accurate, and if the staff's not aware, maybe that could be updated. The issues following family law reforms that have been implemented across the country, places like Florida still lack, due to the Florida Bar's Family Law Section preventing fifty-fifty custody of fathers, especially affecting the black community. Ever since the shooting, I've experienced more support. Today, for the rest of Brevard, I'm sorry, for the rest of the board, explain to students how we're going to protect the students by arming their teachers. Students, reach out to your service members to get information. Some teachers are cops, veterans, hunters, et cetera. Ask not what the school board can do for you, ask yourself what are you willing to do for your students to protect them, to paraphrase Kennedy. Thank you.
Melissa DeFrancesco, Dan Bennett, and Jazzy Hennings.
Good evening. My name is Melissa DeFrancesco. You are close, very close. I am a wife, a mother, professional engineer, and a voter. I'm also co-lead of the Melbourne Group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, a newly formed group here in this community. I'm here today to urge the school board to reject the recently passed Guardian Program that would allow districts to turn over responsibility of safety of our children to arm school staff. While the recently passed state law following the Parkland shooting does much to address school safety and gun violence, I do not support the provision to allow the arming of school staff. We've all heard the line, "The only way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun." That seems to be the misguided motivation for the Guardian Program. So let's think about Dallas in 2016. During a demonstration in downtown Dallas, a sniper targeted law enforcement on patrol, shooting twelve police officers and killing five. The only contribution of dozens of armed open carry activists present during the shooting was confusion. According to law enforcement, the presence of openly armed civilians only complicated and delayed their ability to identify and neutralize the shooter. Let's think about Joe Zamudio, who was armed in Tucson when Senator Gifford was shot, and who admitted that he was within seconds of shooting the wrong person, and remember that it was unarmed civilians who tackled and subdued the shooter. And even the most upstanding American citizens, the most responsible concealed carry permit holders who would presumably undergo training, are only human. They lose their temper, they exercise poor judgment, they misinterpret situations. They lose their temper, they exercise poor judgment, they misinterpret situations, and they might even leave their gun laying around by mistake. Think about all of this in context to our schools, surrounded by young children. Gun violence prevention organizations and experts, teachers, school staff, and law enforcement overwhelmingly oppose arming teachers and staff. Let's instead make sure our school staff is trained to recognize and report red flags when students or other community members may be a danger to themselves or others. Let's make sure every school has mental health services available for students who are having a hard time, and let's work as a community to put school resource officers in every school. We can do that as a community. Arming school staff is not the answer here, and it does nothing to keep our schools safer. Please listen to us. Please commit to opting out of the Guardian program. Thank you.
Dan Bennett, Jazzy Hennings, and Joan Crutcher.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Nice new podium that you have here. You've heard a lot of discussion, both this meeting and the last meeting, and a lot of points are being repeated, which is good because they're important, but I want to add something new, if I can, to the conversation, and it begins with, Mr. Craig, you, in your opening comments to public discussion, you said, "Be careful because, watch what you say because there's children present." And I'll expand on that. Not only are children present, not only are students present, but children are watching. And students see the world that we're leaving them. Students see the bad decisions we're making today and the violent world that we're leaving behind, and they're not going to fall for the same mistakes that we have fallen for. The students of today deserve real solutions to very real problems, and they know. They know deep down in their heart when there's too much violence, when there's too much gun violence, the answer is not to add more guns to the situation. I spoke to a lot of students at the rally this weekend, and I've heard some more through the Moms Demanding Action Group, and they're not going to stand for a role that doesn't stand up to gun violence, that doesn't come up with real solutions. See, the kids of today, they've never been paid off by a special interest group, they've never been indoctrinated to why the Second Amendment protects these assault rifles and, you know, doesn't come up with real sensible solutions to gun safety in this society. Now, that's not just what my speech was supposed to be about. But what I want to urge you today to realize is that the students are going to remember, and the future leaders of tomorrow are going to remember, if we gave them a real solution or another politically paid-off, soundbite solution. The best solution to school security is to bring in the professionals. There's nobody that can protect the schools better than the sheriff. Not asking for anonymous volunteers that may or may not even volunteer to begin with, not looking for people who may or may not even be on campus that day, not asking for people who applied to be educators and now ended up armed security. But in this room, I noticed that when we needed security in this gun-free zone, you brought in the professionals, and that's what should happen on a school campus, bring in the sheriff. Now, that's a challenge, because everyone's thinking right now, well, that costs a little bit of money, right? We have maybe 40, 45 schools, and this costs between $60,000 to $130,000 per person. How are we going to do that? Well, I remind you all that before anything, you all are educators, and your responsibility, your primary responsibility is to educate the community about what we need. If it's going to cost another $4 million, $4 or $5 million to bring in our SROs and put them in every single school, do you realize that that's an eighth of a mileage point? You could ask the community for an eighth. The county commission could ask the community for an eighth. The community won't give it if you don't ask, and you can't ask until you educate. Do your jobs, talk to the community, let's get it done the right way. Thank you.
Jazzy Hennings, Joan Crutcher, and Elaine Christine.
Good evening. I just want to preface what I'm about to say by letting you all know that I was once a 13-year-old girl whose 14-year-old best friend died. So I know how that affects an actual child. There is no evidence that more guns help to prevent school shootings. There is, however, evidence that increased guns will increase gun-related accidents. For example, in 2017, there were 344 mass shootings. There was 2015 unintentional shootings. By bringing more guns into our school, we look to raise one of those numbers, but there's no proof that we can lower the one that seems to be the aim. Any determination which increases firearms in schools is likely to reflect every other trend in our nation, more guns equals more gun deaths. I think it's important to ask yourselves, if a student is being accidentally shot at school by personnel, is acceptable collateral damage? The only way that you can move forward with arming measures means that your answer is yes. If that's the case, then you're devaluing the lives of our children, and hopefully that will come at the demise of your own political career. The sign behind you declares your mission as to serve every student with excellence as a standard. Risking lives is not excellence. The police is a group of people who spend time practicing their marksmanship, and they don't even have a great shot record. Why would you expect that school personnel would do any better? Please use science-based facts and logic when considering policies that will risk our children's lives, and please extensively research the impact that these policies will also have on people of color. All five of you, as well as Sheriff Ivy, are employed by us, the public. We have spoken. We do not want school officials armed. Thank you.
Joan Crutcher, Elaine Christine, and Fred Kilgallen.
I am Joan Crutcher, a very concerned grandmother from West Melbourne, and I implore you to opt out of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act that would arm school personnel. Brevard Public Schools' Safe School Plan must focus on prevention, not false protection and retaliation. Hire counselors and trained volunteers to address bullying and behavior issues, not rely on armed personnel that will only add more risk to the students and staff. My granddaughter is a BPS middle schooler, currently grappling with her math teacher's excited desire for the laws to change so she can bring a gun to school. Oh, no worries, she assured her students she was well-trained, an excellent shot. This was no comfort at all to my granddaughter, nor me. She says to me, "What if she gets really mad at us? What if she misses the shooter and shoots one of us instead?" What do I say to them? The known presence of guns will not stop a determined person brandishing a deadly weapon. It will only increase the chances of injury or death. Guns belong on a range and in a hunting lodge, not in our schools. AR-15s and their rapid-fire multiple-round magazines belong in the military, not in our stores. Our students belong in a safe school, not in a shooting gallery. Brevard School Board, please, be wise. Listen to your constituents, listen to us, really hear us. Choose preventative options and the well-being of our children over guns in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your attention. My name is Dr. Elaine Christine. Allow me to introduce myself as someone uniquely qualified to help manage the risk in the recent threat to safety in Brevard Public Schools. Risk management is a positive and proactive way of looking at the possibilities surrounding a negative situation. My textbook, Managing Risk, was published 20 years ago. I developed a five-stage maturity model for risk management and show in actual, real-world case studies how to take programs from crisis to control. At Harris Corporation, I led the Software Risk Management Action Team and wrote the Process Guidebook as a full-time member of the Software Engineering Process Group. I graduated in 1995 with a PhD in Computer Science from the Florida Institute of Technology. My doctoral dissertation is proactive risk management methods for software engineering excellence. On behalf of Harris Corporation, I submitted the Best Practice in Software Risk Management to the DOD Best Practice Initiative. When software risk management was named the number-one best practice, I was asked to write the guidebook for the government. Contracting to the Software Program Managers Network, I taught 600 government program managers over direct satellite broadcast in Fort Belvoir. I have a one-day and a three-day seminar that I have taught around the world, like London and New Zealand. My clients include the General Counsel of Lockheed Martin, the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco, and the Defense Logistics Agency. The first step in the process is risk assessment. Accomplished in a timely manner, risk assessment can help move the rudder of the ship to avoid an iceberg. Small groups meet to share risk without attribution from their perspective in the organization. Groups form to represent the organization, for example, the school board, principals, guidance counselors, and teachers, and, yes, students and parents. I believe that this situation needs a risk assessment from an independent facilitator that is an expert and trained, such as myself, and I am here to help. I believe that if you ask a carpenter to come into the classroom, they're going to bring hammer and nails. If you ask a surgeon, they may bring a scalpel, and if you ask a police officer, they will bring a gun. Teachers need books. Our students deserve no less. Thank you.
Fred Kilgallen, Damani Hozie, and Daniel Waking.
Congratulations, you got my last name right. Almost no one does. My name is Fred Kilgallen, and I'm speaking tonight as a person involved with Brevard Public Schools on many levels, wearing many hats. I graduated from a BPS school. I teach in one. My children all graduated from BPS schools. My grandchildren now attend BPS schools. I have supported this system with my taxes since 1995. I know that this time, these days, seem especially fraught and feel very significant, that the decisions that we're calling on you to make right now seem more weighty and more meaningful, perhaps, than any you've made or may make in the future. Let me encourage you, however, to take a step back, take a breath, and realize that we are not at this very second and immediate danger. Anytime we're called on to make decisions when we are feeling panicked and rushed, we'll almost certainly make a bad one. Yes, we're all on edge. The horrific events that happened in Parkland have us, well, frantic, frankly, but the probability of an event, on the whole, is mathematically very, very small. I know it doesn't feel that way, but it is, and in that space, we can calmly reflect before we act, before we decide. The governor and the legislature have put a deadline before you, but it's just a deadline. I encourage you to make your decisions with an attitude of earnest but calm reflection. I believe that if we reflect calmly, we will recognize that populating our schools, which are pretty safe right now, with armed, well-intentioned but inexperienced amateurs is not in our school system's best interests. Incident after incident has shown that guns are inherently dangerous tools and must be the center of the armed person's focus the entire time that person is armed. This is not a job for a person whose focus is on anything but security. I'm asking you instead to make our perimeters more secure and to only consider adding a trained school resource officer to schools that do not already have one. As someone who has experienced the shock of his property taxes taking a significant leap this year, as a result of the increase in the value of my home, I tell you this, I will still happily pay whatever increase you need to put an SRO in my grandchildren's or anyone's school. Bill me, I'll pay.
Thank you, sir. Damani Hozie, Daniel Waking, and Dean Paderakis.
Hello, School Board. My name is Damani Hozie. I have two children at Brevard Public Schools, both of which attend Suntree Elementary School, and unfortunately, I'm here for the second time, basically, to make the same plea that I made last time, which is to strongly resist, to stand in opposition against arming school personnel. I think this would be a bad decision. It would be wrong-headed. There are better ways to make our schools safe, more evidence-based ways to make our schools safe. Already at the elementary school that my two students attend, they've increased the fencing, they've made it so that there's only one way to enter the school. These are first steps, reasoned steps, to make our schools safe. People have mentioned the use of resource officers, trained personnel, who their primary and only focus, their professional focus, is safety. That's who we need protecting our students, not people who could potentially be vigilantes, people who are inexperienced in school security. That's what we don't need. We're a school system, therefore, we should use evidence to make decisions. We should make decisions based on facts and reason. It sends the wrong message, I believe, to students if we're making knee-jerk, making decisions based on knee-jerk responses and emotion to what happened in Parkland. All of Florida's largest school districts have already summarily rejected this ideal because it's a bad ideal. We've seen multiple cases around the country of armed school personnel improperly discharging guns, and that's what, we don't want to complicate an already emotional situation by subjecting our students to potentially the people who are not trained at using weapons. I believe in the right to own guns for personal protection. I grew up in a household where we had rifles, and we used them for personal protection. I have chosen personally not to exercise that right because I believe it's too risky to put my children in the same, have my children in my household with guns. If you were to enact a policy that allowed personnel to be armed, I would be forced to send my children to a school where potentially they would face the very risks I'm trying to avoid in my to avoid in my own home, and I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Daniel Weaking, Dean Paderakis, and Eric Lehman. Dean Paderakis? Don't see, oh, there comes Dean.
Good evening. My name is Dean Paderakis. I'm school board candidate running against Andy Ziegler. Ms. Skipper, you're absolutely correct. They don't really, I'll add some, but you guys really don't care about the students as much as you care about yourselves. Yes, she is right, you have three deputies in one room, and who is that protecting? You. You don't have that many in one school. I'll tell you what, I guarantee you there's three more waiting outside because if they knew I was here, they'd add three more, and that's the truth, isn't it? I agree with Mr. Bachelor, too. We cannot trust Wayne Ivy to, as dog catcher, let alone our students. And we've seen what had happened up in Astronaut, which if it wasn't for the Titusville Police, we could have had a Parkland incident right here. I have seen a lot of incompetence over the years. I have seen, 12 years ago when I was a teacher in Brevard Schools, I seen Dr. De Potry allow bullying from administrators, my principal, teachers, and students. Under Bingley and under Ziegler, we saw how they misspent $8 million in no-bid contract. It actually turned out to be only $5 million, but regardless, that could have been spent on something better. Now we have Dr. Blackburn, which I sit here and I cannot believe that we're paying you $225,000, $250,000 a year. I cannot believe that we gave you over a $10,000 raise when the teachers only got $200. But again, that's how it goes here in Brevard. What amazes me, and what's ironic, is that you are not even committed to this district to where you will move your family here. What's ironic is that your family is down in Broward.
Mr. Paderakis, we are not making direct comments at people, please. If you have to discuss something that has school board business...
Then can you pause my, while you're talking to me, because I want my full three minutes.
You have it.
Okay, thank you. And what bothers me on top of it is that we have a board that voted to not only give you a company car, but give you the company car to drive down to Broward to see your family, and I'm not sure if we're even paying for your gas. So to me, you can't afford a little Prius on your $250,000 salary to drive your own self down there. We have to pay for it, while in the meantime, we can't get protection for our children. Ridiculous. And I'm sorry, I'm a little passionate because it's almost funny, but it's not. We need to do something about security, but you have to take a step back and look at what we've done to our children. And I'd like to have this conversation, but three minutes is not enough. I ask you guys, if you want to talk, let's give people the time to actually talk about what needs to be done. And this knee-jerk reaction of arming, let's look at what we have done to our students because it's the students that are shooting other students. What is a very easy fix is let's stop the bullying because the kids that are being bullied are the ones that are lashing out. But I haven't seen any change because we continue to see here in Brevard County, kids still being bullied, and you and the administration and principals are not doing anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Paderakis. Eric Lehman, Hannah Tessie Sullivan, and David Meter. Eric Lehman. Eric, Hannah Tessie Sullivan. David Meter.
Good evening. I made it out of the three of us. I wish that you all would do public comment first because a lot of times, the people that are coming here want to address certain specific things that are on your agenda. And the issue that I wanted to speak to was the armored car service. And unfortunately, it wasn't tabled. Thank you, Matt and Andy, for trying to table that. It wasn't that necessary to push it on, and you could have listened to people who wanted to speak to this issue. When we're looking at this, and my experience in retail management is fairly extensive. When we break this out, it's approximately $2,000 over 180 days. And we even do further than that, each school, that's all that they're carrying is $2,000. How much of it is in checks? Probably a fair amount. And when you start breaking it out further, that it's over the summertime, the amount becomes even less and less. Regardless of what's going on here today, and I wish everybody would assume good intentions because everybody wants the same thing, and that's the safety of our kids, but we're going to need money to do something. We're going to probably be asking the county commission, municipalities, to help us solve this problem. And for us not ponying up $70,000 if that's the operating cost, that's going to get other municipalities, and the county commission may be backing off and not wanting to put as much forward saying, "The school board should have done that, they shouldn't have gotten an armored car service." So anyway, just in closing, I would encourage the board to please have public comment first so you can hear what these people have all come out here to say, they've taken their time to do it, and then go ahead and vote on these things. And the things that you can table, please table because this one could have waited till May, and you could have made a decision. It may have been the same one, but at least there'd been time for more consideration and looking at facts. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meter. And that is totally my fault. We go through the topics. I did not see yours, and I did not see Dr. Christine's, and I do apologize because usually we are able to pick out the ones that are appropriate to the actual agenda, things that we are voting on, and that is totally my fault, so I do apologize. Cheryl McDougal, John Voss, Sarah Webb.
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn and school board members. I'm Cheryl McDougal. I'm a licensed clinical social worker who has spent the last six years working in public education in elementary schools. I oppose to arming our teachers, but I am certainly in favor of SROs. SROs, a school resource officer, they, their occupation is to serve and protect, and they do a fabulous job. To me, it's community policing at its best. They become part of our schools, many of the students will go to them, they're a resource, not just to serve and protect, but they become members of our school community. I also am in favor of mental health clinicians. It would be wonderful if every school could have a mental health clinician. A mental health clinician has a varied role. We help, when we, people are talking about anti-bullying, we work on that. When they talk, a social worker or a mental health clinician intervenes when there are problems. A teacher will come to them, a student will come to them. I can't tell you how many times I've had lunch with a whole group of students because they needed to talk. As our students have mentioned, right now, there's, most of our students have some type of trauma in their lives. A social worker, a mental health clinician can really help with that. I also support a social-emotional learning curriculum. There's evidence-based, that is a curriculum that can help with solving problems, helping our students make the best decisions in their life. So, in closing, what I would like is, let's not blur the lines of what each occupation, our SROs and our teachers do best. Our teachers are great educators, that's what they went to school, they're passionate about that. SROs, they serve and protect, that's what they're good at. So I hope that we don't get confused and blur the lines of these two professional occupations. Thank you.
Afternoon or evening, Board Superintendent. I'm not going to go over my credentials, it'd take too long, but one of the things I want to bring out here is what great resources we have here and now. Fabulous ideas, fabulous insights, okay? Now, I want to give you some old saying. You don't bring a knife to a gunfight. Everybody heard that one, right? There's an addition to that one. You don't bring a handgun to an AR-15 weapon-of-war fight. Now, why does that happen, and most often ever since they repealed the current automatic weapon law that we had, is because if I was going into a school to do damage, I would have an AR-15. I would not have a pistol. And that's why we have to understand that some of these ideas just aren't reasonable. Another thing that's not reasonable is we don't have to do this because we had two Supreme Court justices state, and that's Judge Scalia. And Warren Burger said, "There are certain weapons that do not get Second Amendment protection," and we're not looking into that aspect. Think about it, folks. It doesn't have to exist, and the Supreme Court Justice, Judge Scalia, who is not my superstar by any stretch of imagination, and Judge Warren Burger said, and I quote his statement, "It's a big fraud by the NRA." Judge Burger was very, very good Supreme Court Justice, from what I recall. So those are things that we have to consider, is go after the Second Amendment and push it, use these people as a natural resource, and just remember, you don't bring a pistol to an AR-15 weapon-of-war fight. That's the reality, and that's why if I was anybody doing anything, I would bring an AR-15 because the odds would be in my favor, right? So, think about it. Thank you.
Sarah Webb and Ashley Burke. Sarah? Ashley? The board does truly wish to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is greatly appreciated. We do appreciate you hanging out and sharing your thoughts with us. We know it gets long in the evening. Again, to Mr. Meter and Dr. Christine, I do apologize for not getting you in before we went on to the rest of the agenda, and I will strive to make sure that doesn't happen And that brings us to board member reports and discussion points. Before we go to each board member for any things, I've added a couple of things on there. One is the superintendent's evaluation process and timeline. I think Pam has handed, given you a handout regarding it. All I ask is that you take a look at it. I know that this is the first time you've seen the dates. This is utilizing last year's process, and similar dates adjusted a bit for holidays. We have Memorial Day in there as well. We have a targeted goal of going over the board and, with the board and superintendent going over the final evaluation and discussing targets for the next school year on Monday, June 18th, which gives us from April 25th, which is when we would like to have all those evaluation forms submitted to Pam and Tammy, allows it to process through, and then you can see the rest of the dates. Is there any discussion or questions or recommendations for alterations to the process and/or the dates?
Just a quick question, and it may be here, and I'm just scanning over it and not seeing it right at this moment, but typically, prior to us completing the evaluation form, there's a timeline for him to submit his self-evaluation. Is that part of the timeline? And have we verified his self-evaluation works for him?
Pam?
If we go based on last year, he would submit it Wednesday, April 25th.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the superintendent submits his April 25th, and we submit ours May 23rd. I misstated that, I'm sorry. So that does, gives us about a month to digest his input and make our own input. Is that right?
And my question would be, Dr. Blackburn, I know you have some important DAD stuff coming up in April. Is that, do you feel like that's a feasible timeline, or do you feel like we perhaps need to bump?
If possible, I'd like to work to make that happen, if I could leave a window open to ask for an extension at some point, but for now, I'd work towards making that happen.
Okay. Very good. Excellent. Any other questions or comments on the evaluation process? The next thing I added was school safety future steps, and we've kind of talked quite a bit about it tonight already in various ways. The reason I put it on there was in case any board member wanted to bring up anything regarding what they'd like to do in the near future, realizing that we are still in the process of collecting process and an overall layered, you know, the whole layered approach so that we can make, as I think one person said, and I wrote it down, it was a very good comment, using facts and research, and that's exactly what we're doing, is collecting that so that we can make the appropriate decision. But I don't think it is the right thing to do to just ignore that, and that you've all made excellent points about that, and that's exactly what we're in the process of doing. So, is there any other discussion we want to have right this minute? I know we have other things scheduled in the future, and we'll be getting it out to the public as to the dates and times for those specific events. The last thing is FSBA renewal. I think Pam sent out the email. We have to renew in June. There are three board members that are part of FSBA and two that are part of FCSBM, and I just want to make sure we're all, have that discussion that we're all on board with staying the same way. You know?
Come on, come on both.
You have four that are members, he's a member of both.
Oh, he's a member of both, that's right. He took that money, yeah, that's right. So we have four, and we're all good with staying the same for this upcoming year?
Yes, sir.
All right? And Pam, can you please document the adjusted cost and the letters that we need to send to the state and to the FSBA for those separate issues?
Send you a different invoice.
Send you a different invoice, okay, great. All right, thank you very much for entertaining those discussion points. Does any other board members have any points of discussion? Mr. Susan?
One of the issues that I keep having when we look over the agendas and stuff like that is, is that there's an item there that says, "Is this a cost savings or a cost to the district?" And then there's justification there. We don't have a policy that outlines how that's put together. And I keep saying, "What's the hard cost?" And then there's these cost savings because we have seats and butts that we're considering. You know, their salaries is considered a saving. So what I would like to do is for us to go back and then come back in April 17th and say, make a recommendation or put together our thoughts on the 17th as to if you guys have the will to try to create a policy that extends how that is to come to the public and to us. So then in the event that there's somebody who presents a recommend- So that in the event that there's somebody who presents a recommendation in the future, that it shows that it's a hard cost, or if it's another cost of, you know, savings based on deferring this person from doing this job to another. But I think we would do our due diligence as a board to define that as a policy so that we don't have any issues in the future. I would say to bring it back on the 17th, our thoughts, and then maybe move from there.
Do we need a policy? It's just the form? You want to add a line that has, separates out hard costs?
I would rather put a policy together that defines the form. That's what I would like to do. And I'm not asking you guys to make a motion or anything like that, I'd like you to think about it. But there's been multiple times throughout the last seven, eight months that we've dealt with issues where things have said that they're cost savings, and they weren't one way or the other, and the armored car for me was not a savings, and that's where it delivers from.
So as the finance, what am I called? The champion? Sorry, it's a long night. It's the finance champion. I will get with Ms. Erker, and we will figure out how to maybe memorialize how that ROI process looks and how we can apply it uniformly so that it is in the public. I would defer to Ms. Enval on whether that is truly a policy that is creable. In just my, you know, quick thought about it, it's not really a policy, but maybe I'm missing something. So anyway, we'll discuss that, two separate issues. Got the first one? We'll make sure that we get something in writing that everybody understands, that's clear, that we can, that we can use a decision tree, or however you, whatever you want to call it, so that we can make sure that it's easily understandable and that we can flush things through it. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just a line that says what the hard cost to the district is going to be in the upcoming year. Does that make sense to you? That's the goal of what I'm trying to do. However we get there.
Got it. And Ms. Enval, if you can just back us up on the policy question. Are there any other board reports? Dr. Blackburn?
Yes, sir.
In hearing none, no further business. This meeting is now adjourned.